Be busy. It'll be busy week. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this Lakewood City Council regular meeting for this Tuesday, January 16th, 2024. It's fabulous to see all of you here in the audience tonight, and certainly those of you watching from home. We are certainly hopeful that all of you are here to learn about the neighbor walk we're going to do it for Silicon Park this Saturday. So I'm glad you're all here. You have your personal invitation to join us for a wonderful time out for Silicon Park this weekend. So without further ado, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bell, here. Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Lorisella.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss has been excused, and Mayor Whalen.
President.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And now if you'd please stand and join with me in a brief moment of silence to honor our brave men and women serving this great country, both at home and abroad, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, again, thank you very much, fellow neighbors and residents, for joining us tonight. We're pleased tonight to have several items of interest, including our section proclamations and presentations, which is always first. And tonight, we are honored to pay homage to the Larry Saunders Service Award presentation and presenters and Mr. Warfield. If you'd want to come up to the podium and tell us who we're honoring tonight.
Indeed. Thank you, Mayor Whalen, and greetings to the city council and newest council member. Good to see you. And ladies and gentlemen, I have a lot of thank yous to mention tonight, so I hope you'll bear with me. We're here to honor the memory of James Lawrence Saunders. I don't want that to be lost in all the frivolity you're about to have to follow. A great American whom we all miss, who, as most of you know, perhaps all, founded the Lakewood Police Department after retiring from the Army and trying to sort things out in Iraq. And his very gracious wife Sally, Mrs. James Saunders, is with us tonight to continue on. This award is, this is the seventh year that we've given it out, and it's to recognize an individual or an organization that's provided extraordinary service to the city of Lakewood and our community. I want to begin by thanking the Award Recognition Committee, which was made up of a Chair of the Chamber of Commerce, a member of the community. And that was Tammy Faulner, and then joined by Mike Branstadter from the City Council and from the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund, of which I am a part, to bring the partnership of this award together with the city, represented by Hallie McCurdy. And joining those people with the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund are several people I would like to mention, some of whom are here tonight. Nicole Hancock, Greg Radiskey, and Ann Enquist, who is here tonight, are part of our Board of Directors from the Lakewood Rotary, which inspired our organization. And joining them from the Clover Park Rotary are Ramona Hinton, Hallie McCurdy, and Bob Lawrence. And they are joined by three other board members, Jerry Dunlop, Peggy Kennel, and myself. And our task is to hit you up for money and give it away thoughtfully. And it's a great program because you will see, if you follow our progress, that we give away generally twice what we take in. And that's because we are invested through the Greater Tacoma Community Foundation. And I would encourage any of you who are able and willing to consider, as some of us have in this room, contributing 10% of your estate to the organization, so we can continue to grow this for community. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the conspiracy afoot to bring this award together for our honoree tonight, and that's Ann Davis, Sidna Kuntz, and Andy Gurnon. And it's lovely to see you here this evening. In any case, joining them, as I mentioned, is Sally Saunders, and who is noted for planting parks, saving barns, and feeding lions. And we're always delighted to see Sally in association with this award. And tonight, the award is going to Eleanor Ellie Wilson. And I want to say a few things about Ellie, and at the same time, mention that this plaque, which now has her name on it, will be displayed again after this evening at the left side of the greeting area coming into the main entrance of City Hall. With a picture of Larry on it, no less. Eleanor Wilson, I don't know what you did in your childhood, Ellie, but you're certainly your adult existence, as has been revealed by the lovely ladies who put you up to this, is quite extraordinary. Ellie graduated from San Jose State and went on to, I guess, a teaching career of considerable merit, and continued with traveling with her husband Gene, raising a family, getting around the world, and I suspect has been to more countries even than I have. And I've been to a bunch. In any case, in association with military service, I presume, and then came back to this wonderful city of ours to invest her time and energies with the Clover Park School District. And did some remarkable work with the Parent Teachers Students Association, developed a curriculum for Discovery Science, which would have been exciting for me and her cadre of children and learning how to become adults, had I been so fortunate to experience that. And she's been quite active extending her hospitality to bring foreign exchange students into the community regularly, which must have been a great benefit for her family as well as the students. And together with all of this, she has found time to now to bring her talents and organizational skills to Habitat for Humanity, and has been recently quite active, I guess, with getting the Habitat Facilities going in Telecom for the Claudia Thomas Housing Project. And that's coming along, and I guess approaching completion this year, perhaps. I'm imagining. It looks like it's doing well. And so tonight, and I guess I should mention also that, I'm not familiar with this, but evidently this is pretty prestigious. In 1988, Ellie won the Golden Acorn. And some of you who are professional educators probably can appreciate that far more than I can at this moment. But it certainly is a substantial additional badge on her long list of qualifications in service to the community, the school district, and probably everyone she meets. So without further ado, I would like to ask Mrs. James Lawrence Saunders and Mayor Whalen to come forward and make a presentation of an award to Ellie Wilson.
Well, come on up, Ellie.
Come on down.
Well, it's my honor to be here tonight along with Sally Saunders, to recognize you, because all of us who have spent some time working on volunteer efforts here in the city of Lakewood, come up, Ellie, have crossed paths with you and have certainly broken bread with you and have longingly worked on many a project with you. And so Ellie, you've touched so much from the beginnings of incorporation efforts through all sorts of issues, supporting students, Lakewood's promise, briefly on the community engagement leadership team, we worked on some issues together. So you have done yeoman's work, and we are very appreciative. This plaque says, "City of Lakewood and the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund, the Larry Saunders Service Award for extraordinary community service is hereby presented to Eleanor Wilson of the city of Lakewood. She's awarded this certificate in grateful appreciation by the city and the citizens of the great city of Lakewood, Washington, this 16th day of January 2024." Signed both myself and Nicole Hancock as President of the Lakewood Community Foundation Fund. So on behalf of all of us, again, Ellie, thank you for your incredible, extraordinary service. And we know that you would love to have some words, some final words. So let's congratulate her first.
Well, this isn't a surprise today, but it was a surprise when I had three of my dear friends tell me that they were going to put in an application for me to earn this award. And my partners in crime were Andy Gurnon, Ann Davis, and Sidna Kuntz, who I have known for many years. And they cornered me and let me know that they were going to make that application because they felt that I had met the requirements to earn it. So everything that you've heard tonight is true, as far as I know. When I look back at my history, sometimes I wonder, who was that person who did those things? Because time has gone by so fast. The journey has been long, but it's not over yet. And there are so many things yet to be done in the city of Lakewood. Sometimes I wonder how I got to this point. It all started when I was 12 years old and started babysitting for the neighbors. And ever since then, I've had a passion for our young people, our children and our youth. And I still have that passion, and there are still things to be done to support our children and our youth in Lakewood. There are a lot of good things going on in Lakewood. We have a collaboration, which I have been really proud of, and I know that you all are as well. It's one of the few cities that has developed a collaboration like the one that we have. One of the things that makes Lakewood so special is the fact that we do things together. We solve problems together. I think that we have a lot of people with a heart that is that is open to the things that we do and the things that we try to do to solve the problems that we have. It's one of the best places to live, and that has been known for a long time, since the city of Lakewood has earned that quality, that title, over six or seven times with communities and schools and Lakewood's promise. There are several other cities in the United States that have earned that award as well. But that award really means a great deal to us because it tells us that we have resources here that are available to our youth and our children. And when we embellish and when we look at those promises, those five promises that we have that are provided in this community, those are the things that make our community strong. So while the journey is still ongoing, because I'm still working on Habitat for Humanity and those two homes that are being built in Telecom are going to be done by the Christmas season coming up. We have two families now that have been earmarked to take a home, to take up residence there. So in addition to those two, there are 10 others that are going to be built in Telecom. I can say that it has been a team effort. In fact, many of the things that I have been involved in have been team efforts. And this is one of those things, too. We've had a lot of help from members in our community to make this Habitat community a success in Telecom, and I appreciate that. Again, I thank the city council, the people that I have worked with, the community foundation for this award. It means a great deal to me. It's something that I just never anticipated getting. Thank you.
We'll take a quick photograph here, and then we'll go all the way up there. You got to turn that around. Come on up, guys.
Just two seconds.
Sure. We've got the plaque. Get it.
I'd like to mention that along with the award comes a check which Ellie has designated to communities and schools of Lakewood for $1,000 from the Lakewood Community Foundation.
Well, Bob, thank you, and the members of the Lakewood Community Foundation so much for this annual recognition opportunity. It really makes a difference to recognize those within our community that provide so much energy and volunteer enthusiasm and accomplish so much for all of us. So thank you to your group, and thank you again, Ellie, and Andy Gurnon and Ann Kirk Davis. It's wonderful to see you as esteemed members of our city council alumni. So thank you for being here tonight. It's just wonderful to see you both. Andy was, she was on the council, yeah. Absolutely. Yeah. So we appreciate you coming tonight. It's good to see you. Next is a business showcase and an opportunity to celebrate the contributions of a local small business owner here in Lakewood. And tonight, we're honored to have Jose Gonzalez with Veterans Roofing receive a bit of recognition as an esteemed small business here in Lakewood. So Jose, if you'd meet me up at the podium, we'll present a proclamation. Do we have a video at all, Ms. Schumacher, tonight, or? We do. Okay. Thanks for coming. Good to see you. Well, in Lakewood, we often say we mean business. And when it comes to celebrating small business, that truly is the case, especially with small business owners like Jose Gonzalez. Veterans Roofing started in Lakewood 14 years ago, but the owner, Jose Gonzalez, is a lifelong Lakewood resident. He graduated from Clover Park School District Schools and chose to return to Lakewood to start his business. An Army veteran, it's always a good thing. Mr. Gonzalez wanted to name his company something that reflected not only his values and experience, but those of the Lakewood community. As a member of the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Gonzalez is active in the chamber. He also participates in an important tradition each holiday season, the Lakewood Blue Lights. Each year, Mr. Gonzalez and his business volunteer time and resources to string blue lights on buildings around the city. This assistance makes it easier for businesses to participate by doing the hard work of stringing the lights to recognize the incredible tradition that we here celebrate. Ultimately, the lights symbolize the holiday spirit among Lakewood's local business community. So on behalf of all of us here in the city of Lakewood, I would like to present this proclamation, sir, to Veterans Roofing, recognized as the January 2024 City of Lakewood Business Showcase because of its longevity and positive impact here in Lakewood and due to its commitment to upholding the traditions and values that reflect this city and its residents. Dated this 16th day of January 2024, Jason Whalen, Mayor. Thank you, sir. It's a pleasure and an honor to have you here. Right? Say a few words? I think we'll play the video. Is that right, Ms. Schumacher? And then we'll give you a chance to say a few words, sir.
My name is Jose Gonzalez. I own Veterans Roofing. So we're general contractors. We specialize in roofing. We've done everything construction. We started Taylor Down and specialize strictly in roofing. I wanted to have a name of a company that stood out, me being a veteran. I have veterans on the team. We wanted something that stood out, that we support veterans and the local community. Lakewood has a lot of veterans in it, so we wanted that name. We want to be unique from everybody else. When we get a phone call and a client's looking at possibly getting a roof, what I do is I come out, I do an inspection on the roof, I walk it, I take pictures of the roof system itself, which starts in the attic, go out to the roof on the outside. If I recommend that we're going to need a roof, I show them the pictures so that way they can see why we were recommending that. And then we come out, get the guys to come out here, they do a tear off, they clean up the grounds, and they start, as you can see, putting the shingles on the roof. Lakewood's a great spot. We have a lot of different ethnicities in the community, so I'm able to have different ethnicity backgrounds, races who help us, men and women. It's really nice. I just love being part of this community. We've been in about 45 years in Lakewood. I grew up in this neighborhood. My business here, I live here. I love being part of the neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. From all of us at Veterans Roofing, truly honored and grateful for the recognition that's been bestowed upon us here today. This knowledge means an absolute great deal to my team. I want to extend a special thanks to Uzbekin Newton, Economic Development, with a manager with the city of Lakewood, and Linda Smith, the President of the Lakewood Chambers. These two great ladies collaborating together, bringing the city and small business together with other staff and chamber members, have provided resource and business assistance, particularly to small businesses. And because of the critical future of Lakewood, their dedication and extra effort have been key in making this happen. We appreciate it more than words can express. At Veterans Roofing, we take pride in our work, and this recognition fuels our commitment to provide top-notch roofing services. Thank you all for the support. We look forward to contributing to Lakewood community to build a bigger and better Lakewood.
Well, thank you. And if we can get members of council to come on down. And Linda, why don't you join us? And Becky, come on up. We're going to celebrate small business here. Well, thank you for that. It's always, again, enjoyable to celebrate small business here in Lakewood. We have upwards of over 3,000 businesses in Lakewood, many of which are small businesses that add an incredible dynamic to the fabric of what we do here in the city. So thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for your commitment to doing business in Lakewood. Next section of tonight's meeting is the public comment section. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live, virtual, or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Brianna Schumacher, at 6000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or her email address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the city council electronically and for the purpose of keeping a transparent record. We'll have the clerk read the names of those who have submitted any comments in advance.
Mayor Whalen, we received no comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Thank you very much. Members of the audience may comment on items pertaining to matters related to city business. And I emphasize that because we've had a few weeks previously where there have been commenters who have strayed far beyond the lines of matters pertaining to city business. And so we would appreciate keeping comment to that. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Virtual comments are certainly allowed. If you would like to provide live, virtual, public comment, please join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782 and enter the meeting ID number 868-7263-2373. When you enter the meeting, please enter your name, use the raise the hand feature to be called upon, and then we will call upon you in due course. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Whether you are speaking personally today, in person here, or virtually, we ask that you state your name and residence for our records, such as Paul Bokey, Lakewood, Washington. And then I'll recognize you. You'll have your three minutes to speak. All attendees on Zoom will continue to have the virtual, the ability to virtually raise hands for the duration of the meeting, but you won't be acknowledged, and your microphone will remain muted unless and accept and win you were called upon. So what I try to do is rotate between those who are first here in person or on Zoom. And so I'm going to call the folks who are here on Zoom first tonight, and then I'll turn to those who sign in on the public comment sheet. Please know that there is a public hearing tonight, and there is a public hearing to consider the resolution by the city council regarding the Clover Park School District four-year replacement educational programs and operations levy that will come before the voters on February 13, 2024. So if you're here to provide testimony for that public hearing, I'd ask you wait till that section of tonight's meeting so that we can keep a proper record. Otherwise, if you have other items that you'd like to address council with during public comment, you are free to do so. So again, I'm going to call on those who are dialing in by Zoom first. And Madam Clerk, I see hands raised, and the first person I see is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Can you hear me? Dennis Haugen from Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Yes.
I haven't been able to watch the meetings for two, three, two or three times. But the last time that I was here was when you had a really bad meeting about, with a lot of anti-Semitic racist people talking and raising a commotion. Now, a lot of that is going to have to be dealt with at the federal level, but there are things that you can look at at the local level. The jihadism, which is part of anti-Semitic, is a funded operation, funded in perpetuity. is a funded operation, funded in perpetuity. So, it goes generation after generation, but it does need money, and it needs money to survive. So, strategy is to cut the money off. So, that's kind of at the national level. And I don't think you have much to do with that.
Yes, try to keep it to city-related business, Mr. Haugen, if you can, please.
That's what I'm trying to do. To where you look at the local level is in the schools. We saw the leaders of the most prestigious universities. Two presidents got fired and for being anti-Semitic. But that runs all the way down because the, the, there's a lot of professors and teachers across the nation. And what you can do about it is be watchful. Watch and know who your teachers are, what they're telling your kids. Now, normally, your school shouldn't have the time to be spreading that kind of nasty political propaganda. They should be teaching, you know, reading, writing, and arithmetic. But many of them think that it's an opportunity to propagandize and politicize their own views. So, that's where you can come in and do something about the antisemitism that was expressed very strongly in your meeting there. Because I don't think you've seen the end of it. I don't know what happened in the last couple of meetings, but it's an organized operation. And you can take part by being watchful and investigating your schools.
Thank you. Next, Roxy Giddings.
Okay, I think I'm on, right?
Yes.
Can you hear me, can you read?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, I wanted to talk a little bit about the oak trees, and I have not been listening to the rest of the, the meeting, so I just, I wanted to say something about the, the ones where they want to make the roundabout. It's really time that we paid some attention to our Gary Oaks, and they're called Quercus garianna, and they are quite rare, actually. And they can be very old. I live in Parkland, which is unincorporated Pierce County, and we have a lot of them in Parkland. And this used to be prairie, and I suspect that where they are in Lakewood is also where the prairie used to be. There's only about 3% of the prairie left. And they go from Vancouver Island down to California on this side of the mountains, and that's pretty much it. We, we really can't afford to be cutting these trees down, they're, they're 100, 200, 300 years old. And they're they're just not gonna grow again in our lifetimes. And so, it seems like we should be saving as many of them as we can. And I, I know that there's a lot more of them than just these that are on Hip, is it Hipkins? Where they want to put a roundabout, but we don't need to worship the car to the point where we have to have that. And we, even if we are following Vision Zero, which is a good idea, to try to save pedestrians, I don't think pedestrians are a whole lot safer when they're around abouts. I think that when cars slow down, that's what makes it safe, and that's what makes a roundabout safe, because you can't go around one of them very fast. So, please, I, I really beg of you, do not cut those trees. We're seeing them out here in Parkland go down, and of course, they're going down whenever they want to put in those monster warehouses, and they're just those things, if they don't put solar panels on every one of those warehouses from one end to the other, it's a crime. And it's a crime to cut down these trees that are saving our air. They are very precious for insects, and that means they're precious for birds. And we just, we cannot afford to wreck the environment any further. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, James Dunlop.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is James Dunlop, and I am a resident of Lakewood. With reference to the oaks and to the environment, now, I am concerned that there is a possible, you know, split in terms of, you know, what people, whether people really care about the trees. I mean, the city went to a considerable amount of expense to have its, the Ad hoc Tree Committee, and we got the impression that the city really did care about, about the trees. And they talked about urban forests, and of course, the Gary Oaks, and the Gary Oak was made the city tree. But, you know, I have a feeling that the city, as in the city bureaucrats, not necessarily the city councillors, really find the whole thing to be just a complete irritation. And they basically do what they want. And, you know, I think this was shown in terms of the way the replacement, the way the here, the appointment of a hearing examiner was, was dealt with. Now, my, I think originally, my understanding is that the hearing examiner system in the state of Washington was existed to give ordinary people a say, to give them a way to question what, what developers, what, what the city were doing. And it seems that not just in Lakewood, but I think across the state, the hearing examiner system has been hijacked. The city, the city appoints a hearing examiner, and there's basically the city can remove a hearing examiner that they, they didn't, that they don't really particularly approve of. And I think I get the intent, this kind of what happened, the previous hearing examiner, perhaps they felt that the previous hearing examiner was giving the tenants too much time, and they just decided to, they wanted a different one. And I think that, you know, the, the city council just, you just looked at what the city, what the city bureaucrats wanted, and you just said, fine. I wonder how many of the city council, when that, when you okayed one hit, the, one, one hearing, one potential hearing examiner over another, whether you were really thinking about it. And I just think, in terms of the city council, you have too much deference to the city bureaucrats, to the people, to the, to the, to the, both day, in charge of the day-to-day running of the city. I think you just, you're easily flattered, you, they flatter you. And I think it doesn't really help that there are three members of the city council, I believe, are municipal employees. Those, you know, is a municipal employee really going to be able to stand up to city bureaucrats? And I think that is a big problem in the way the city, in the way the city is being run. And I don't know what to say, but I think you need to sort it out because something's wrong.
Thank you. That is the last hand I see raised. Madam Clerk, for virtual public comment, am I missing any raised hands?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Okay, so I will then turn to the sign-in sheet, and then if you didn't get a chance to sign in, you're certainly welcome to come queue up at the podium, because we want to give everyone a chance who's here. The first that I see that's signed in is Vicki Stanich.
My name is Vicki Stanich, and I am a resident of Lakewood. Good evening, Mayor Whalen, and members of the city council. I am here to strongly oppose the planned removal of two Gary Oak trees, which mark the entrance to Northway off of Hipkins Road to make room for a new traffic roundabout. Gary Oak trees are Washington's only native tree species. A habitat biologist from the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife reportedly said that these are very old oak trees, and that they are beneficial to wildlife and should be saved. They are used by local wildlife as by, as, as well as by protected neotropical migratory birds during twice-yearly migrations. Gary Oaks serve as critical habitats for a number of rare species such as the propertius dusky-winged butterfly and the western gray squirrel, not to be confused with the common eastern gray squirrel. Both species are recognized as, quote, "species of greatest conservation need", according to the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. More than half of the Gary Oak woodland habitat in the South Puget Sound area of Washington has been decimated since nineteen, since the 1990s, causing a loss of many species. Additionally, the removal of the Gary Oaks will contribute to loss of tree canopy, and I fear the consequences of what could be a growing heat island effect along Hipkins. I have two questions. One is, are there traffic calming alternatives to roundabouts, such as speed humps, for example, as we see down on Interlochen? And two, does the city have a report to account for what the city does with Gary Oaks once they are cut down? Please consider habitat loss, climate impact, and alternatives to the removal of the Gary Oaks for improved traffic flow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And just to point a clarification on, on the oak issue, because I know it's an issue important to many people, we received a thorough presentation last week from the Public Works Director about the project on Hipkins, the review of the alternatives, and, and the fact that they have saved one of the two trees at issue. So, it's the Public Works' expectation that only one of the two trees is coming down, not both, just to make that clarification. Next is Christina Manetti.
Hello, Christina Manetti, Lakewood, Gary Oak Coalition also. So, the, the fate of the Gary Oaks on Hipkins Road, it raises some troubling questions about the city and how it operates. How is it possible that these two Gary Oaks? Because one is definitely coming down, and the other one, they're trying to save. So, I can't assume that it will be saved, of course, they're just trying to save it. How is it possible that they're now in danger of being cut down after all that happened since 2021? All the tree code amendments, and, you know, you know, proclaiming it the city tree and everything. These are extremely important trees, and you've heard this over and over again, but it doesn't seem to be making any kind of impression on you. The city can't, can't say that it's private property, as they always do, who's to blame for this? And there's nothing you can do about it, because it's yours, and you can do what you want, because it's your jurisdiction. There's no vesting involved, as usually people point out that, oh, it's vested. The city, in allowing these Gary Oaks to be cut down, seems to be laying bare a fundamental hypocrisy about just the attitude toward trees. You know, it's not about saving tree canopy, because otherwise you wouldn't cut them down. This roundabout is unnecessary. There are humps that you could put there, you have the zigzags, they didn't work, you're getting rid of them? Somebody told me, the worker told me, you're getting rid of the zigzags, and now you're putting the roundabout? What if the roundabout doesn't work? Then you're gonna be gone, you're not gonna have the trees anymore, and you won't have, you know, you can't replace those. The mitigation doesn't work, you know, you can plant 62 trees, you know, I don't care how many there are. It's not gonna replace two, 300-year-old trees, 200 to 300-year-old trees, and who knows if they're even gonna grow now in this climate? So, you better leave the trees that you have with the big canopies, if you want to preserve your canopy, if you want to help the wildlife and nature here. So, I don't understand why the alternatives weren't accepted. Obviously, the city of Lakewood is not following best available science in making its decisions. The best available science in terms of Gary Oaks here comes from Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, as you heard from Vicki Stanich, who lives by Hipkins Road, by the way, which she forgot to mention. And the habitat biologist from WDFW explicitly said that these two oaks are valuable for wildlife and should be saved, and invited all of you to call if you have any questions. Now, I'm curious if any of you did call and what you heard, and if this changed your mind. I suspect that you didn't call, even though he gave you your phone, his phone number. If it's not apparent to you, even after all the tree code amendment work and information that's been presented during the oak-related appeals, including letters from experts in biological sciences at WDFW and the University of Delaware, then you surely should have called. It's easy to ignore all of best available science and cut them down. It's harder to think of alternatives, and that's what we have to do in this day and age of six extinction, if you know what that is, in this day and age of climate change, if you know that that is. So, take the time
Thank you.
and think of some alternatives. Do not cut down the trees, please, because we're tired of asking you to stop.
Next is Helen Wagner.
Good evening, my name is Helen Wagner, and I too live in Lakewood. A general comment with regards to the preservation of Gary Oaks. When old trees are pitted against humans attempting to satisfy commercial agendas, the trees will inevitably lose. At present, the project to build a roundabout at the intersection of Northway and Hipkins is an example. Two specimen oaks are in the way, so at least one has to go. Why? Is there not another way to manage traffic that will not destroy significant trees? Such trees that are old enough that they cannot possibly be replaced. Planting a replacement is not an answer. Please consider the possibility of everyone's following, following the proposed tree code, so that both private and public projects are in the best interest of the trees. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. That's the last individual who has signed in on the public comment sign-in sheet at this time. But again, if there are any others in the audience who wish to address council on matters pertaining to city business during the comment period, you're welcome to queue up. Yes, sir.
Hello, everyone, my name is Abraham Newchadili, I'm a resident of Lakewood. I appreciate for you listening to my comment, a member of the council. The reason I, the subject that I want to talk about is, yes, is about these two Gary Oak trees. Of course, other than that, when I look at it, this council seemed like doesn't really care about the tree. And I, and I, and I listed how. Every home that is built, also trees are cut and destroyed forever. Oh, oh, yes. Cut and are there never again. So, when a home is destroyed, like our home, which is 5,000 square feet, have you thought about how many more trees should be cut to replace it? No, I don't think so. These are, yes, two trees, but when I look at nine more acres of trees, they were uprooted just in about, within a year in this city, just add them up. I really feel that you don't listen to the people who come to you. How many people they came here and they said, we oppose condemning this resident's home? None agreed with you, and you still overrule them, but you are here to represent them. Is this representative government? Is that the way we call, oh, we are free and we, we, we do the service for our resident? You even use the term that diversity, equity, and inclusion. Like, I am somebody who is not a minority in this city. That's really, I don't know how to term it. I wish you would explain it to me. I came and I asked six weeks ago that this city council calls for a ceasefire, so nobody be killed. You didn't care, and you said that, well, the tax money, we, we don't pay no money for this. No money for a Lakewood goat. Every person who pays federal taxes has financed that. Maybe against their will, but they have, and we should not really, we should be conscientious about that. It's not just the tree, it's a human being. If, if there were not, there was no nature, no trees, we wouldn't be here. We couldn't be here. And we, I appreciate for you listening to me, thank you.
Thank you. Any others who wish to address council during the public comment period? If not, I'll declare the public comment period. If not, I'll declare the public comment period closed. We will now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting of January second, twenty twenty-four. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council study session of January eighth, twenty twenty-four. C, motion number twenty twenty-four dash zero five, authorizing the execution of a grant agreement with Washington State Emergency Management in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars for emergency management performance. D, motion number twenty twenty-four dash zero six, approving the public art policy. E, motion number twenty twenty-four dash zero seven, approving the Citizens Advisory Board Committee and Commission work plans. F, motion number twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, reappointing Linda Smith to serve on the Greater Tacoma Regional Convention Center Public Facilities District Board through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. G, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero one, designating Elizabeth Pearson, the official City of Lakewood representative to the Pierce County Conservation Futures and Open Space Citizens Advisory Board. H, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, planning commission meeting minutes of November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there any item which any council member wishes to remove from the consent agenda at this time? If not, can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
Mayor, I move to adopt the consent agenda. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Branstadter, seconded by Councilmember Laura Sella, that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Mr. Branstadter.
Mr. Mayor, I would just want to note that this consent agenda does a, goes a great deal towards setting our goals for the year. And particularly with respect to the work plans for the boards and commissions. Within those work plans, there are any one of a number of them where there are, we have asked the boards and commissions to give us input so that we can act on new initiatives and other improvements, and I think that that's important. And in that same vein is the consent agenda includes the, an updated and refined public arts policy that is very consistent with our vision of trying to move forward and, and, and make the arts a more robust and enjoyable part of our community. So I think this is a, a very meaningful consent agenda, not just a bunch of routine actions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Branstadter. A comment well stated and well taken because it is true that much of the work we do sometimes is in study sessions where very few folks have the opportunity. They have the opportunity, but take the opportunity to listen in. And a significant amount of work is set forth on the Citizen Advisory Board Committees and their work plans. And as we've stated many a time, it's the work of the volunteers from incorporation to date that has really made Lakewood the city that it is. And so you are correct that their, their work and their work plans are significant. So thank you for that. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda. The first item is public hearings and appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing to consider a resolution regarding the Clover Park School District four-year replacement educational programs and operations levy coming before the voters on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. And for this, I believe we have an overview by our city attorney, Ms. Heidi Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Heidi Walker, your city attorney, and the council has gone through this process in the past, and at one point had added a public hearing time. This is not prescribed by state law. This is something that this council has specifically sought to provide as part of their process when they're determining whether or not to express support or opposition to a proposition. Under the law, the council can only take a position on a proposition like this as a body at a public meeting and express either collectively support or opposition to it, or choose to not take a position at all. Tonight, we've provided you with documentation that could be a pro-support that we would bring forward for a vote at a later date or an against. And in the materials, you see that this will come before the voters on February thirteenth, so you would obviously want to take action prior to that date, because the whole point is to let the voters know if you are taking a position. Tonight is the night you've set for your public hearing, so you probably don't want to hear anything more from me, but I would be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Any questions of Ms. Walker? Thank you. I think you've outlined our, our policy guidance quite well. I appreciate that. This is the opportunity for the public to provide testimony on this particular matter, which is the consideration by council regarding the Clover Park School District four-year replacement educational programs and operations levy that does come before the voters on February thirteen, twenty twenty-four. Public testimony is accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. As indicated previously, comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Ms. Schumacher at six thousand Main Street Southwest in Lakewood, or at her email address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to the clerk, and the clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted testimony in advance that may come to the council.
Mayor Wayland, we received no testimony in advance of this evening's meeting.
Very good. Members of the audience may comment on this particular item, which is the public hearing, as I have indicated. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please, if you are signed in here tonight, approach the podium, queue up if you will, state your name and residence for the record, such as Paul Bokey Lakewood, Washington, and you'll have your three minutes. And I believe we're allowing virtual testimony as well tonight, and so virtual testimony is provided by joining the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number two-five-three, two-one-five-eight-seven-eight-two, entering the meeting ID number eight-six-eight, And then please use the raise the hand feature. As you may have noted during the prior public comment period, we will call on those individuals in the order of which hands are raised. So at this time, I'm going to first call on those who have signed in physically for this portion of the public hearing tonight, and the first is Mr. Ron Banner.
Thank you, Ron Banner, resident of Lakewood. Tonight, I'm here to address the council. I appreciate the opportunity, and I'll be addressing the council as the superintendent, so I will not be taking a pro or con measure here, but I will be kindly sharing some facts. I'll try not to read the pamphlet because it has been made available through your public information office. And I'll try to stay at a, at a broad level. I won't, I won't read to you, but we are running Clover Park School District a replacement educational programs and operations levy to be on the ballot for February thirteenth. This is not a new tax. It is a replacement levy at actually a lower rate. Our board approved this levy to move forward at a lower rate, which was an average of two dollars and thirty-six cents for the last four years. And so we are looking at an estimated two dollars and thirty-six cent rate per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. Four main areas that our levy will address are student readiness, educational technology, safety and security, extracurricular activities. It is a fact that the state does not fully fund educational programs, public schools, as the constitution of the state of Washington requires. And so local revenues is what we use to fill those gaps. It is a fact that this is not a replacement levy. Did I say that? Because I just want to make sure that you guys know that this is not a replacement or a new levy. It is a replacement levy. I contradicted myself, so I'm going to have to say that about ten more times. Two dollars and thirty-six cents rate. Our students benefit from these dollars that are, again, local revenue, and we give these dollars back to the local as local revenue. It's the reason we're able to create a late-night program with our YMCA. It's the reason that we're able to support the school safety with resource officers through the Lakewood Police Department. Safety is a huge issue. Don't need to say anymore about that. I'm certain that you guys are all aware. Students need to feel safe when they come to school. Students need technology, equity-based technology. We need to make sure that every student has what they need to engage in tomorrow, not engage in today, right? We need to teach our students for their tomorrow, not our past. And so that technology is important to our students, and these dollars help support that. Our student readiness, everything from highly capable to early learning, back IB program. That three minutes goes a lot faster when you're on this end of the podium. So again, tonight, as I state, I'm not taking a position. I'm just providing you with information with facts. This flyer will go out to the community, and like I said, it was made available to all of you through your PIO office. Thank you so much for the opportunity just to come and share that information with you.
Thank you. Next, Ali Laska.
Um, thank you. Ali Laska, resident of JBLM. Um, good evening. I am a senior and a member of the Associated Student Body at Harrison Preparatory School. Although I am graduating this spring, I encourage the community and Lakewood City Council to support the Clover Park School District Operations Levy on the ballot this February thirteenth. This is a continuing replacement levy, like Banner said. It is not a new levy or tax. This levy supports students and school programs that are not supported by state allocations, and it is true that the state does not fully fund public education, and our local operation levies fill this very important gap. Levy funds support my fellow students through our counseling services and nurses, additional paraeducators and teachers, and maintenance and operation personnel that keep the student building operational and a positive environment. To sum it up, it benefits me and my peers and allows us accessibility to opportunities to continue to thrive. Levy dollars support our informational technology programs and provides students with one-on-one computers and our student online learning programs that we use in the classrooms. Levy dollars support many additional clubs, activities, and off-campus learning opportunities for students, things that help the students express themselves and just thrive, which has helped me grow into who I am today. A very important feature of our levy dollars is directed towards keeping our schools safe with campus supervisors and other safety precautions and procedures that we have in place. The list goes on, and we want to thank you and the voters for your historic support for continuing replacement levy as a community, as the community has supported students on this vote for decades. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening, and again, I ask for you on behalf of all of the CPSD students to support this levy. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next, Lisa Boyd.
Good evening, Mayor Wayland and City Council members. I am not going to say that I'm not, I'm standing up here without saying for or against. I really am soliciting your support for our levy. And I'm here with several members that are here to support the levy and to, I just wanted them to stand because if you are here in support of the levy tonight, and that is your reason for coming out and weathering the storm, I want you to know that there's lots of people standing behind me. And thank you, guys. And this evening, I am standing as the chairperson for the levy campaign. And I'm standing on foundation of several people that have come before me in this role, like Ellie, who was our award recipient tonight. She served in this role, I learned it nine times. And so, and then on the, on the heels of my mom, Dr. Claudia Thomas, who served in this, oh, I'm a little bit nervous. I don't know why. Who served in this role as well. And many of you know that I grew up in Lakewood, and my sons and I both graduated from Lakes High School going through. And so we have a passion for supporting the schools here. And my mom served on the city council, the very first one, and started the youth council. And it has grown by leaps and bounds. And I am so proud of having a school named after her, Dr. Claudia Thomas Middle School. My family and I will do anything to support Clover Park School District. And not to mention that I worked for twenty-one years as a principal in the district. So I'm standing because I've seen the inside, and I've been able to know how important these levy dollars are. Managing school budgets, the replacement levy, as you heard from both Ron and our student ASB person, go a long way to fill the gaps for things that our students need. As a former principal, I've witnessed the dedication of our educators, nurses, counselors, security personnel, and many others who contribute to the success of our schools and our students. And I've learned through experience that managing school budgets really relies on much of our levy funding for the vital needs, lower class sizes, supporting advanced placement, international baccalaureate program at Har- No way. My three minutes is up? Please support our resolution or your resolution and our levy. Sorry about that.
Thank you very much. It was the same clock that Mr. Banner had. It went quickly. It goes quickly. Next, Vicky Stanich.
Hello, I'm Vicky Stanich. I am a resident of Lakewood for the past thirty years. As a resident of Lakewood, I would like to remind everyone in the Lakewood community to vote in support of an important educational programs and operations levy to replace the current levy, which expires at the end of this year for the Clover Park School District. The replacement levy funds school safety and security, special education, student readiness programs, educational technology, extracurricular programs, and other important needs. The levy will be on the ballot on February the thirteenth. My child is no longer in school, but as a member of this community, I strongly feel that the levy is very important to support the students, families, and to maintain our public schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Tate Bloom.
Um, so my name is Tate Bloom. As you said, I am a twelfth grader, a senior at Clover Park High School. I'm currently in ROTC, sports such as cross-country and track, and a few different clubs. And I am in support of the levy for it funds a few several things that we do, such as the games and meets that we put on and that are put on by other schools in our district. And transportation is also included in this levy, such as after-school transportation for activity buses or other things of that nature. Once again, like Ron Banner had said, nothing is changing with this levy. This is to propose a replacement levy to replace it. So there is no change in the price. There's no change in what's happening. It is just asking you to keep funding what we're already doing, to keep funding the sports that kids are participating in, to keep funding their home away from home, really, to support our students and the relationships that they're building outside of their home and inside of school and inside of those extracurricular activities that are really helping to enrich their lives and are helping to elevate them to a higher human being and just a better community member overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't you love it when students speak? It's great. Lola Stevens?
Thank you, I am Lola Stevens, a resident of Lakewood. I am the treasurer of the ASB Executive Council at Harrison Preparatory, and I'm going to be speaking in favor of the replacement levy. So as a student in the Clover Park School District and an older sister to three other CPSD students, I have two sisters at Idowild and a brother who just started at Harrison Prep. I believe that my peers and I would benefit from this levy. As other people have mentioned, it helps fund a lot of the extracurriculars who, which I participate in. And I don't think I would be having at all like an enjoyable experience without those extracurriculars. The current levy dollars support the paraeducators, the nurses, the counselors, the library, other crucially important staff. And I have seen the key roles that these play in the lives of students at school. Therefore, I think continuing this funding is very important to maintain and improve the wellbeing of students. And I urge the community to think about the message they will be sending through the vote for or against this levy. Please continue your commitment to the quality of education for students like me by voting in favor of the levy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is the last individual who signed in on the public hearing sheet to testify during the public hearing. But again, let that not hold you back. If you'd like to address the council and provide testimony for or against in terms of the resolution on the table for the public hearing tonight, now's the time. Going once, going twice. Seeing no other individuals stepping up to speak, I will declare the public hearing closed. And again, I want to thank all of you, especially the student speakers, the adult speakers are fabulous too. But it's just really wonderful to hear student speakers, we really appreciate that. So thank you for that tonight. So the next part of tonight's regular agenda includes determinations by the city manager. If we have any unfinished or new business to attend to, Mr. Coffield?
There's none, Mayor.
Very good, so now we'll turn to Mr. Coffield for his weekly report.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Just a couple of quick updates. The first is in recognition of Dr. Martin Luther King Day yesterday. The MLK Committee launched the first of three videos. And if you haven't had a chance to see the first one that went online yesterday, it is definitely worth a view. The second one will be posted next Monday on the 22nd. And then the third one will be posted on the following Monday on June 29th. Also, in recognition of Black History Month in February, there'll be a number of videos recognizing 12 heroes here in Lakewood as part of our Hidden Heroes Program in February. And so that'll kick off in the beginning of February and go through the rest of that month as well. So just wanted to give the mayor and the council a heads, a heads up on that. The other item, just real quick, you know, the state legislature kicked off their session a couple of weeks ago. And so they're in the process of holding a number of public hearings and reviewing bills, whether it's in the area of public safety or transportation or housing or environment or whatever it is. And I just want to let you know, and I know I forwarded our weekly report from last week out to you. I just want to let you know that the city of Lakewood, our staff and our team are actively engaged in a number of areas across those various disciplines, as well as of course, moving forward and providing feedback and input on our legislative priorities. So just again, wanted to give you a heads up on that. And we're hoping to be able to schedule some meetings down with our state legislators on their turf in Olympia on Thursday, January 25th, so more to come, more to come on that, on the specifics and the logistics. So if you could just mark your calendar if you have an interest in going down. The other is just real briefly, your, your calendar. And just wanted to piggyback off of the public hearing that you had on the levy, the school district's levy. So this Friday from 3:00 to 5:00 PM at the McGavick Center, the superintendent asked me to pass on to you that you're all invited to a, to their winter graduation. And it is kind of a last minute item, but we did put it on your calendar. So if you have an opportunity, there is an open invitation to attend that. And again, it's over at the McGavick Center, begins at 3:00 PM. They do ask that you be there and seated by 2:00, 2:45, since the event will begin promptly at 3:00 PM. Also, as was mentioned earlier, this Saturday, in partnership again with the school district, the city and the school district will have a welcome walk and meet your neighbors event down at Forest Silicon Park in the Wahop Lake area. So heads up on that. Unfortunately, the deputy mayor couldn't be with you this evening and so hence, no council pictures this evening. And so we would like to move that out to next Monday if, if, if that works. Though I understand maybe another council member might not make it this, on Monday. So then we'll be looking at February 5th, but right now, you know, plan for, for, for next Monday unless there's a, a change there. And then also on the 25th, which is a Thursday that evening and into Friday morning, Pierce County again will be doing their homeless point in time count. And if you have an interest in participating in that, I know we sent you a link to the Pierce County webpage that would provide you an opportunity to sign up and get out and do that count countywide. And again, that would start early evening on Thursday, the 25th and go into the early morning hours of the 26th. And if you don't have that or you know, you need that information, please let myself or the city clerk know and we can get that, get that to you. And then lastly, just wanted to put a plug in, I know many of you are going to be attending in some shape, form, or manner or providing some, some financial resources is caring for kids, is having their happy hearts dinner auction at the McGavick Center on, on Saturday, February 3rd. And that kicks off at, at 5:00 PM again at the McGavick Center. So just wanted to pass that on, but with that, Mayor, that's my, my report.
Thank you, any questions of Mr. Coffield on his report? I don't have questions on the items, but I have some issues, we'll chat, I guess, during council comments when we get to that. So specifically about the road project on Hipkins, I've received a number of comments from people about access to their homes or driveways for delivery people. So it seems as if we might have some more communication flow to some of the residents here. I just got a text tonight about a woman who's taking care of a 100-year-old mother and repair people and other delivery people are having a hard time getting through to the neighborhood. So if we can take a look at that and get our communication folks to chat with the contractor, I think that would be a good idea. Mr. Brandstetter? Any council comments? Yeah, thanks. I didn't expect you to go out to Hipkins now, but.
If you insist, Mr. Mayor. That first of all, regarding the, the fact that the city manager mentioned the the winter graduation, which is actually a graduation of students who have been going through the Open Doors Program in the Clover Park School, and I plan to attend that on Friday. You know, I think that those are students with challenges who have proven themselves to be resilient and gotten to, to the point of where they're setting themselves up for success. And I'd be glad to go there and, and, and support them. Mr. Mayor, I I would request that you schedule a special meeting of the council for the 22nd of January in advance of the scheduled study session. And a special meeting would be to consider the resolutions that were the subject of the public hearing that we had. Because I think if we are going to pass a resolution one way or the other, that we should do it in a, in, in, in a timeline that is likely to make it impactful. And waiting until February 5th, when ballots are going to be mailed on January 26th, is not consistent with that idea of us wanting to be impactful in, in, in what we do. I know for me, ballots come in by the 29th, my ballot will be in the box in front of the city hall. You know, and, and I think that, that, that there are many folks that, that do that. And, and taking an action on the 22nd will allow us as a city to communicate our collective view on, on the levy. And so that would be my request to you. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, request duly noted. I certainly would favor that as well, making that the first item on a special agenda for the next meeting on the 22nd of January, unless I have any other council members in opposition to that stiffly. Looks like we have consensus, Mr. Coffield, to do that.
I just wanted to point out, Mayor and Council, that it would be actually its own standalone meeting in advance of the study session. So it wouldn't be a joint meeting, it would be a separate. You would call the meeting to order, you would do your business, adjourn the meeting, and then move forward with your study session.
Correct. That works. Very good, thank you, Mr. Brandstetter. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking forward to the welcome walk this weekend and down the street from my house, so I'll be taking family down there. Speaking of family, I had my son's birthday party at the Catapult, which I don't know if you've been to many kids' birthday parties recently, but they're either at Catapult or Defy over in UP Tecumseh area. But I just, every time, I, I just am thankful that we have Catapult here in Lakewood. They have a great partnership with Pizza Pizzazz, it's a seamless transaction, very nice, sanitary. So that was a, that was a great event. And then the I had a comment about the, the project over on Hipkins and we got some updates from Mr. Bucic about potentially saving one of the trees. And I, I just, if we could get that, you know, whenever a, a, a completed revised design is done, that is in fact going to save a tree, if it is, you know, to communicate that out to folks. Because we had a lot of comments tonight about two trees being removed. And I, I think that they're pretty hopeful to only have to remove one. So that's some positive at least, so. If we could communicate that out, that'd be great. And that's, that's my comment, thanks.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanted to thank the gentleman from Veterans Roofing who came tonight to be celebrated. The history of blue lights around the holidays in the city is, is, goes back a long time. I've heard from a number of residents who've been here a long time that really appreciate it. So thank you to, to, to him and his company for what they do. I too will be at the welcome walk on Saturday, looking forward to it. Tomorrow, I will be participating in the South Sound 911 Board, representing our city there. For other folks here in our community, we are in the midst of a bunch of inclement weather. So I encourage you to check in on your neighbors and stay safe. I saw that Clover Park School District is already starting two hours late tomorrow. So for those who are, are listening, make sure that you are staying safe and aware of those things. Lastly, I wanted to talk about the, the trees on Hipkins. I went out and took a look at them yesterday and got a good idea of, of where things sit and where right of way is and, and why we are having to go, go through this process. And I had a question to the city manager, is there an opportunity that as that tree comes down, if some of that wood can be used for a public good, such as benches nearby or in Forest Silicon Park or some other use in its afterlife, if you will? And that's it.
We can, we can check on that, the contractor actually controls the site. But if we can check on that, I don't have an answer for you right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will confirm the Catapult is great. Also, we wear frequent flyers. And then I did want to thank Mr. Gonzalez with Veterans Roofing for coming in and being featured. I think that that's just, he's done a really great thing and I love the explanation for the blue lights because I think a lot of people get asked of what those represent. So I'm very appreciative of that. And I think that I just wanted to make a comment on the, the presentations tonight and the public hearing and the public comment, that they were all very informative and thoughtful. So I appreciate what everyone had to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Friday morning, we had a South Sound Housing Affordability Partners meeting. Nice presentation by Rock Northwest. Those were the folks that came here to talk about ownership of mobile home parks. Interesting factoid, there are five tenant-owned or, you know, I don't, tenant-owned is the right word, owned communities, resident ownership communities in Pierce County, two of them are in the city of Lakewood. There are 205 units protected throughout Pierce County. And they, and they talked about it and I don't know that we got the numbers when the other individuals here, but they actually have to do a lot of math to figure out if they're going to buy it and the cost of operating it and the cost of purchasing it. And this is interesting, they can work within a 40% variance, which I thought, you know, my, from my banking days, I'm like, oh my goodness, I mean, 40%. But the individual said, you know, sometimes they don't make it, right? I mean, that because the costs are just so high. And when they look at what the folks can afford from, from payments every month, they just, they just can't make it. So, and, and it becomes, they, they, they just can't fund it. So they are active, they're still out there working on, on things. Advisory Board, Councilmember Brandstetter was on the group that put the advisory board together, that the advisory board was approved. And the other thing, when they talked about, they're working on a developer portal update that goes city by city. It's about 97% complete, released in the next couple of weeks. We'll have to take a look at it. In the legislative update, their big thing is the 1406 flexibility. And I don't know, I haven't checked our legislative ask or, or update to see if that's on there. I'm not quite sure what they're, what they're, they just want more flexibility, which isn't surprising from local government. So it can be used for more things other than what's already dictated. And I thought the 1406 funds were already pretty flexible, so we didn't get into a big discussion about it. So this week, Wednesday is tomorrow night, Comprehensive Plan Planning Commission. Yeah, and they're beginning to look at the 2024 Comp Plan Periodic Review. So that's starting Thursday. Mr. Mayor, we have a PCRC meeting and there are action items on there, or at least discussion about some action items, because they are looking at a number of UGA amendments. It seemed, and I was just trying to pull it up, I was just looking for it. City of Bonnie Lake has a number of, it's interesting and I don't quite understand their strategy, but they have a number of parcels going out of the UGA, but at least one larger parcel coming in. And I think it's more buildable than some of the other lots, so. I don't know if we have a problem with that as a city or not. And then I'm looking forward to Saturday and the welcome walk, so great. Hopefully. I think last year was sunny. It won't be this year, but we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Very good, well, thank you echoing that. I will be at the Pierce County Regional Council meeting on Thursday, preceded by Pierce Transit Committee meeting, Finance Committee meeting, so more to follow on that. With regard to the Neighborhood Walk on Saturday, I look forward to that. Hopefully we'll get a good turnout there. Last year's walk was really great. Lots of folks got to meet each other, some of whom never had met previously. But it's a great opportunity to mix and mingle and hopefully the temperature will be above 16 on, on Sunday or Saturday, rather. With regard to tonight, I echo the comments of Councilmember Bell. This was a good example of public comment that was passionate yet respectful. And it differed from the prior two Monday nights where we had some comment that wasn't respectful, albeit passionate. So it's great to see that we're turning the corner on folks focusing their energies and passions on matters pertaining to city business, and I appreciate that very much. With regard to the, the hearing tonight. With regard to the, the hearing tonight, I think we're going to have some good discussion on the special meeting set for January 22nd. I look forward to that. My only comment personally is that cities that thrive support their students in their schools. And students that thrive are living in communities that support their students. So I think that that's an important thing for all of us to, to remember. We are a city that's come a long way, and we need to continue to move the ball forward collectively as a community. So without further ado, we will see you all next week. We're adjourned. Oh, Mr. Coffield has an alibi.
I'm sorry, Mayor and Council. City Clerk reminded me, as a follow-up from your study session last week, where you each selected your various appointments to commissions and boards, both internally and externally to the organization. There is still an opportunity to serve as an alternate at PSRC. If the council recalls, Councilmember Pearson is serving as the primary. However, there is an opening for an alternate if there is a member who is so inclined or interested.
In the absence of some willing member to take the short straw, I'll do that. I can be the alternate, especially now we can do it virtually. In years past, when I did it, it was a schlep to Seattle and back for most of the day.
That's a day. Yep. Okay. All right. So Mayor Wayland, you will be the alternate. Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Any other alibis for the good of the order? If not, again, thank you for a good meeting tonight. We're adjourned.